To the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a motion for approval of October 21st, 2025, meeting minutes, please?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I get a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to special items, we have none appointments to the boards and commissioners, we have none scheduled public comments, we have also none, just a reminder that public comments need be entered to the city clerk by Wednesday before the meeting. Moving on to public hearing, we have none introductions and first readings, none, old business is none. Moving on to new business, discussion of action regarding the possible ban of e-bikes in certain areas of the town.
Thanks, sir.
Board, this is, I guess more or less kind of submitted for your consideration, just
starting out with some complaints specifically of e-bikes on the walking trail in the park. Going very fast, making people uncomfortable, and I think legitimate danger issue, so at the request of the park board, I presented to them, you should have a memo there on September 30th, three-page memo that should have been in your packet that I submitted to the, I submitted to the park board with a suggested starting point for banning basically motorized stuff in the park. You know, anything, with the exception, of course, of a legitimate handicap-type transport, but in terms of recreational with a motor, shouldn't be allowed in the park, or at least that's potentially for the park, for the park board to present to you guys. So that's there, and then it was discussed, and we just decided to go ahead and do a, at least open a citywide discussion, if there's any interest in doing something on a broader scale, we'll have one ordinance that addresses e-bikes citywide, that could also, of course, include the initial stage one of the park part. And so what I've got there for you is some suggested, or sort of a model ordinance from Laubert Municipal Law, from one of their attorneys, provided to us. I, it, it was way more expansive than this, covered a whole bunch of other stuff, I cut all that out and pared it down to just the e-bike park. And again, this would be something that, that you all need to decide, or had the opportunity to decide, if you want to proceed with that, obviously there would need to be, assuming Todd Smith would need to do some wording cleanup and stuff, because this is my editing of Laubert's language, it would need to be approved, and then, of course, discussed by you guys, so. More or less kind of the starting point, yes, sir?
Let me interject there, so for clarity or clarification, the park board does want to ban these things in the park. The park board does not have the power to do that, only you as the board have the power to do that. There does need to be a public hearing ahead of any type of ban, whether it be just for the parks, or whether it be citywide, so what Scott is bringing to you tonight is the park board has taken action, they do want them banned, they're making that recommendation to you guys, we need direction from you, whether you want to evaluate the need to do a ban in any capacity citywide, or if we're only interested in the park for the time being, or park properties, and we will draft ordinance, and we can continue to move this process forward and schedule a public hearing to have some interaction on the matter.
And then what I would tell you, I have experience with other cities, the state of Missouri has this, as the chief alluded to, this very complicated thing where stuff on wheels that is self-propelled, there's lots of categories, there's lots of, it's not as simple as, well, it's a bicycle with a motor, is it a motorcycle, is it electric bodies, is it scooter, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, so that's part of the complexity. And then you really have two kinds of parks, you have a park where you put up a sign, no vehicles allowed, and that does the trick, and you're good. And then you have cities where the sign doesn't do a thing, and you start talking about cameras, and will people report it, and will you give community involvement? And that's not to say we shouldn't do it, or consider it, I'm happy to do it either way, but I, I don't want there to be any misunderstanding, we're not talking about having policemen stand around all day in the park board, we're not talking about park rangers, you're talking about putting a sign up, and hopefully that does the trick. But I have cities who have gone to the trouble of putting up that sign, and it doesn't seem to do a thing, so. But, you know, you do consider the fact that if you don't feel comfortable there, a certain percentage of our citizens aren't going to use the park, and then, you know, the liability that may arise in the event of someone being injured, but appreciate the chief putting it together, happy to answer questions.
Well, sorry, I'm ready. Questions, concerns?
Uh, just comments, I, I kind of agree that they probably should be outlawed in the parks, I don't think at this time we need to go any further than that in other parts of the city, you know, have we, we haven't had any other complaints, have we, about them in general?
No, we didn't.
Well.
My neighborhood, yes.
Is it the noise, or is it?
No, it's, no, it's the safety of the children, and you're driving through that neighborhood, and these kids are just crossing over and acting crazy, and I mean, it's, it's horrible.
And the possibility of just getting here also banning them on sidewalks, because we have, it's actually, so when they're riding the school, and they blow up and down the sidewalks out here on Main, and, so we got, it's not a noise concern, most of these are electric, almost all of them are required, but it's a safety.
And the reason we went, we have a model ordinance is this is a problem in lots of cities, I mean, this is a thing that comes up a lot, people on motorized vehicles of various sorts, old, young, and otherwise, running around.
I think they use our street as a drag strip.
And I could see, I could see banning from sidewalks, too, that would make sense.
Well, and this, again, there's any number of ways this can happen, this particular ordinance basically bans them on sidewalks and children, you have to be a licensed driver, like if you're 16, you have a driver, you don't have to have a motorcycle license, but this particular model, if you are a licensed driver, you can operate on the streets legally, that's, that's not an issue, so. As it sits right now, the state of Missouri has a blanket statute that gives them the same rights responsibilities as a bicycle, as a conventional bicycle, that's the current name, and then, like you said, they have broken them down into class one, two, and three, and you can move on from that.
Move on. Have we had any issues with bicycle riders in the park?
You know, since that path was not very wide. In that regard, the complaints we've gotten have been regarding to speed, you're talking people doing 20 miles an hour, in the proximity of walkers, and that's substantial speed.
Brenda, you want to share your concerns and issues on this?
I just did.
Is there anything else?
No, I mean, no, they're, the kids on the street that I live on, and you know where I live, they're up and down Martha Crump, and they're coming around pinto pony, and it's dark out there, and one of these days, somebody's going to get hit, and I just hope it's not me doing it, because I can't see them, they're just little maniacs.
Can you tell about what age they are?
No, I don't know, well.
I'd be probably under 16.
Ah, yes, probably, yeah, some, several of them's under 16, several of them's middle school.
I mean, I'm full of opinions, I don't know if any of them have any merits.
Well, I mean, I'm not, that's my opinion, I mean, I just, I see it.
Yeah, I see, I mean, if the chief says it's a safety concern, it's a safety concern, he's the one.
Well, do you see it in your neighborhood, I mean, because I know she sees it in her neighborhood.
Oh, I, I haven't seen it.
I live in the poor folks type of part of town.
What ward are you?
Poor folks, one.
Ward one, that's a ward one problem, I guess, ward two.
Yeah, you're a little higher up there.
We got golf carts.
Yeah, that's what you got, I can't afford the golf cart.
So, I mean.
Those things are pricey, are they coming in from other wards? Who's your ward?
The, my, my biggest concern is, obviously, if people don't feel safe in the park, that's an issue, I think that's a no-brainer to ban them from the park.
It's very much.
I think for the sidewalks, my fear if you ban them from the sidewalks, they go on the street, whether or not they got a driver's license or not, and it's not like the actual police department's got 25 officers out there patrolling the streets, so that would be my concern about the sidewalks, is do they just go on the road then?
We're not, the police department's not making a recommendation, the park board has a recommendation.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I mean, you're here.
I'm just presenting options, and we'll do, we'll, we serve at your pleasure, and we'll be able to do all the side.
They're on the streets now.
Just giving you the options.
Well, then, but what I'm saying, if you ban them from sidewalk, they don't have a choice but to be on the street.
Yeah, well, no, that is true, but they are on the streets now, also, so.
Well, speaking to my prosecutor head-on, as the city prosecutor, let's understand the situation, youngster is running around getting, and there's a report made, the officer happens to get there, and a citation is issued, and they need to come to city court to answer to that, and they, their parents will come with them, if they're minors, and we'll have a discussion in court, and someone has to pay the fine, that's what we're talking about, if someone breaks this rule, we're proposing to pass, that makes sense? We're not talking about arresting people, we're not talking about a juvenile case, we're not talking about, you know, juvenile haul, we're talking about, here's a summons to come to court in downtown Columbia, someone's going to pay the $100 fine, or something like that. And you would hope that that happens once, where it gets around the playground and people back off, that's the hope.
Oh, man, nah, dude, teenagers, they double down.
I think I'm kind of struggling in a way to see the difference between a bike and electric bike, obviously, one can go faster, but I think if either one is on the walking path at the park, and they're, you know, they're going to sneak up behind someone, it's going to scare them, I think, I'm not saying that they should be on the bike path, but I'm just.
What I typically see is a no-vehicle policy, because you, and I have no objection what the chief is suggesting, I have no qualms with the recommendation of park board, but under Missouri law, bicycle, electric scooter, ATV, golf cart, go-karts, motor, i- it's a dizzying array, look, we want people to walk around the park, no wheels at all, we don't want you to zip by on a scrapeboard, you know, that kind of thing.
I mean, I feel like that's kind of unfair for our families who live out on property, and they don't have a place where their children can ride their bike.
I understand.
So, I.
I, I just give you the experience.
I know, but, well, and then I'm, so I'm thinking of my friends who live out on property, and they don't have a driveway or a sidewalk to ride their bikes on, you know, the, the park would be a place where they would probably take their kids, and granted, their kids are going to be allowed, and people will hear them coming, but I'm, you know, I'm just making sure that, I'm not saying that I think they should be there, but.
So this, this originally came up with the park board, driven by citizen complaints on the e-bikes specifically, and then that also evolved to staff complaints and destruction of property, because they're out there doing donuts on the ball field, tearing it up, that happened multiple times this season, they don't stay on the trail, if they stayed on the trail, that would be almost better, but they're, they're ripping all over the playgrounds, through the mulch beds on ball fields, and that's causing damage outside of the potential pedestrian collisions that could occur at the, at the high speeds that were raised by some of the walkers out there.
I think we should have a public hearing, I want to hear from these 12-year-olds.
My dad had an eight-year-old friend out there walking, and he might do it behind him, and there was three of them, and they scared the hell out of him, and that is true. In fact, I think he got a call about it, I, I didn't make the call, but I know that happened, that was three or four months ago.
So, so you have a recommendation from the park board, I think staff needs direction on whether or not you want to run with that recommendation, whether or not you want to not run with it, whether or not you want to do something else, no matter what the ordinance final form looks like, we, we have to have a public hearing, so, you know, we're missing two in tonight's discussion, and also need to have a public hearing, so, you know, that public hearing can be loose, we can leave it as, as open as we can to allow for further discussion to occur around the issue, and dial in an ordinance that meets the needs after that public hearing, but.
So we can have a motion to have a public hearing, or set a public hearing for this, for this, alright, so can I get a motion to set a public hearing to discuss the regards of banning e-bikes from the park?
I would just leave it as certain areas of town.
Okay, certain areas of town, sorry, I have a motion.
So what?
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
This would need a roll call. All in favor?
Just voice vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Discussion on action regarding the TAP grant, staff call, please.
Alright, really, I just wanted to have some discussion around TAP, some further discussion, I've kind of been going back and forth with the Y as they've pursued pricing for CL Richardson for their walking trail, and what that could potentially look like for the grant, and the TAP project, you know, MoDOT would like a definitive by end of the calendar year, so I just wanted to bring this back up, to have a little bit of discussion around it, just to make sure we all know where we're at with this project, so as you know, and as we've reported, a few months ago, we had bids come in, the first time we put in alpha bid, we had zero bids, second time, we had two bids, one was excessively high, and one was incomplete, so what you have before you is, is the high bid at $670,000. The engineer estimate is $438,000 for all components, and then down below that, I've just, I'm sorry for looking at the white page, not the big detailed page, just the blank page, down below that, I've simply extracted the YNCA's component under the assumption that they have indicated they'd like to move forward with CL on their project on their own, which that would still, you know, if we were to move forward with the grant, that would be in-kind work, it wouldn't be eligible for grant reimbursement, but it would at least potentially allow for the grant to move forward, but that still leaves us, you know, between $300,000 and $500,000 of cost across the remaining three components of the project, which are the Liberty Lane sidewalk, the Henry Clay rapid flashing beacon set, and then the Crump Lane rapid flashing beacon set up by the high school, so you can see the costs on those, we probably have opportunity, and I know Kevin in the Streets Division has looked at this, we probably have opportunity to drive down some of the costs for the rapid flashing beacon sets, Liberty Lane, there is some work that the city can do, but in the grand scheme of things, that's a very complex project with a retaining wall that needs to be constructed, some utility extensions that need to occur, so probably best from an efficiency standpoint to just leave that bid out, and not try and do any of that component in-house. If you look at cost savings on the beacon set, you know, the engineer estimate is $50,000 for, for each of those, maybe we'll come in a little bit less, we're not going to come in tens of $20,000 less, we might be able to do that, you know, in-house or closer to 40 apiece, so we can shave off some costs there, but, you know, it really comes down to whether or not there's a willingness for the city to carry these projects forward, there's only about $100,000 left of that grant to draw down on, so again, it, it kind of leaves it at, do you think it's worthwhile to, to potentially rebid this, you know, try and cut out the YNCA as working kind, try and cut out a little bit of maybe the rapid flashing beacon sets as working kind to drive down that, that Liberty Lane cost, rebid it, and see if we can get to a more agreeable price point, you know, no matter what, it's going to be a couple hundred thousand dollars out of pocket on the city to, to carry these three projects forward, you know, and we've worked with the MoDOT over the last few months to try and do something different, and unfortunately, how these grants work is, once you have projects identified under that grant, that is what you are required to do under that grant, you can't cut projects out to try and drive the cost down, so our option is to execute the grant as awarded, or return the grant, or send the grant application award, and reapply at a later date to try and do this under TAP again in the future.
How much would we get to spend out of our pocket if we just walk away from it?
Walk away from it?
Good, and then how's that look on us if we redo for the grant next year?
It wouldn't be next year's cycle, because they've already sent out the grant application for that, so it would be a future cycle, we'd be a few years out, it's definitely going to be a ding on our grant application to the, the scoring committee, to show that we've been unable to, to complete that grant previously.
What if, what if we looked at doing the Liberty Lane project on our own with some outside work?
So the, the option that, you know, doesn't necessarily, it's not, it's not what MoDOT wants, but what would be acceptable is if we were to not move forward with the grant, we could certainly try and execute these projects over the next few years before we reapply, assuming we build to the spec that was designed, that meets MoDOT's spec, we'd be in a position to, to still retain eligibility for future grants, so that's, that's the option to us.
Is the bulk of that property, school property, is, except for maybe one lot?
First lot on Liberty.
That first lot, and is that lingers?
That sounds right.
Does that sound right to you? Because part of the big expense is the retaining wall, right?
I thought it was spec with MoDOT wanted.
Yeah, yeah, what's, I mean, it's a sidewalk, you know, I, I put up a sidewalk almost that long at the last house we built, but, so, what's running up that cost so much?
The lion's share is the base, and then the actual, I'm sorry, that's YNCA, wrong line here, so the lion's share is removal, linear grading, I'm just looking up, is the linear grading, the grading work for that retaining wall, they have bid out at $80,000, so that's a, that's a big component, and then the sidewalk itself, concrete prices are a little high, so there's, there's like 70 grand of concrete, so.
So is the retaining wall going, would it be on the street side?
It'd be on the school side.
On the, on the school side?
Yeah, there's a low spot, kind of, kind of when it transitions from wide to narrow, there's a low spot right in that stretch.
Since there, since that's so far from any building area right now, wouldn't it be cheaper to cut it down where you wouldn't have to have that retaining wall?
I did look into that, and there's a utility structure right away, it's the consolidated water air tie, where it ties in from our water system to the consolidated system to the north, and there's, I, I had the same thought, I'm like, well, let's make the hill go away, there's, there's water infrastructure right away, unfortunately, there's a big vault, yeah.
I just don't think it's in the best interest for the city to be spending hundreds of thousands of dollars.
On the school side?
Oh, yeah, well, the mayor said, I mean, I mean, yeah, sure, we want flashing beacons, I mean, I think they're a huge asset there on Henry Clay for the elementary and primary, but, I mean, the school did $10,000 for that project, I mean, you're looking at, for the, the other two, off the bid, $150,000, more than $150,000, so, you know, if the school's only going to pay, you know, 10 grand, it's just like, well, you know, we want to have a partnership, but that's not going to work, because last I checked, what percentage of my real estate and property taxes go to the school district versus the city, is it 83%?
10 to 1, probably.
Okay, I was just making sure I wasn't off there. I just say I should, I support some of the schools, I should set that on record.
I mean, that, again, I mean, the point tonight is just have some discussion on which direction you'd like us to go with this, I mean, we can certainly continue to work with MoDOT, especially if the YNCA is committing to taking their bid from CL, which is, I think, half of what the bid was, was here for their, their component of work, close to half, so.
And they didn't, they didn't bid on the original project.
Correct, CL did not bid on the original project, so if they can get their component done for significantly less, and, and build it to the appropriate spec, that helps our case, but obviously, there's just not enough money in this project to, to make an easy, easy decision for us.
And CL's not interested in this part of the project, if we were to rebid it?
CL has been asked to bid on it, the first time the bid went out, they indicated they had not received it, so we made sure to get them multiple copies the second time around, and they advised that they just didn't have the capacity or schedule to take on the whole project, which makes sense, I mean, they're committed to the Y's larger overall project, so it's a challenge, you know, there may be value to trying to rebid the other three components, or, or, or cutting it down and trying to do the rapid flashing beacon sets in-house, and just bidding out the Liberty section, but it's not going to yield hundreds of thousands of dollars of savings, you know, I think we can still assume we're going to be, you know, out of pocket $200,000 to $300,000 if we wanted to advance the Liberty sidewalk as a, as a bid-out project.
And the school doesn't probably need to bring more?
The initial indication later, they don't have the capacity at this time to put more money in the project.
Well, maybe all the money they're saving for their four-day school week, they can put it towards this project.
We could certainly, you know, with the, with the Y committing to their trail, we can try and reengage and see if the school has, has any interest, we can, again, we can try and bid it out and see if we get better pricing on just that section, so it's really, how much more effort do you guys want us to, to put into carrying this project forward?
We only got, how many, how many did we, how many companies did we send the, the request out for the bid?
I mean, we always send all of our bids to all of our previous contract workers, I mean, we're sending it out direct invite to a dozen of our, I know, so the first time around, we largely did not get questions or feedback from many potential bidders, the second time around, the engineers talked to, I want to say, 15 or 18 different vendors that had indicated that they were considering bidding.
We only got two.
We only got two, and one of those is incomplete.
I mean, I, I just think it's frustrating for the citizens that we've talked about having the sidewalk on Liberty Lane for so long now, I mean, it's supposed to be done last year, and it can be done this year, and then to just say we're not going to do it for a couple of years, like, I, I don't, I don't think that that's very fair, I don't think price tag here is really great either, though, I mean.
Yeah, it's a sidewalk, it, you know, it, it's gotten able to be done cheaper, yeah.
Like, to me, the difference between the two doesn't exist.
Yeah, that's why I'm wondering, if we, if we walk away from the, the MoDOT, add the MoDOT project itself, and just did it on our own, and.
Yeah, it would just have ramifications for future potential TAP, TAP grant applications, if we were to build it in some lesser degree of spec.
And then how many TAP grants are you going to apply for in the last five years?
Uh, this is the second one.
Second one in the last five years, I think, Main Street, was that the TAP grant?
Uh, Main Street was a TAP grant, Ashwood, TAP grant, I believe, so, I mean, we've done a couple, or three or four, at least.
But nothing this, this large as far as price tag?
Correct, but pricing is also astronomical, but in the last handful of years.
And how much was the grant for? This would be our out-of-pocket expense, even if, like.
We've got about 100K left that we can draw.
The grant was, what, 150, 200?
It's just under 150, yeah.
Well, I'm kind of surprised, I, I don't think I would have thought that 150,000 would have covered all of these projects.
It wasn't intended, but the original cost estimate that was put together back in 2021, wasn't much of that grant amount. But again, once that grant application is in and awarded, there's no adjusting those costs based off of inflation and other.
Well, that makes, that is, that makes sense.
So we can't just do the rapid flashing beacons with the rest of that money, we would have to do something with Henry Clay.
Liberty.
You mean Liberty?
Yeah, yeah, sorry, Liberty.
In order to draw that 100K, we have to do all grant components.
But we're not doing the Y as it is.
Correct, they've indicated that they're going to move forward with CL's contract, so I'm going to revisit that with, with MoDOT, and see if we can pull that out as in-kind to, to draw the, the price down, but point being, we're still going to have a couple hundred thousand dollars of expense, and only 100K to offset it with grant revenues.
We got 200K laying around.
Do you want there to be 200K laying around for this project?
Well, no, I, I know the answer to the question, no, I mean, that, I mean, I just don't see how, with the current budget, we can spend 200,000 on a 100-yard sidewalk. If that's the case, I want to bid, I'm in the ag business, but I can learn, I can YouTube how to put a sidewalk up. Kevin, see you on Saturday and Sunday, me and you.
So, the big cost factor is making sure it's up to MoDOT standards?
Just, just as an example, like, the, the engineer's estimate was developed before the first bid pack went out, based off of today pricing back over summer, and the bid Today pricing back over summer, and the bid came in just on the concrete, twenty-five thousand dollars higher than the engineer's estimate. So.
So it's a tell MoDOT by December thirty-first, we're going to move forward. So we have two months to get another bid and make our decision.
If you wanna rebid it, you can try and rebid it. We'll confer with MoDOT that we can. Count YMCA as in-kind, and we'll have further staff discussions about pulling out those beacon sets. And any, any other things that we can try and pull out in the Liberty Lane component and rebid the remainder.
The other thing i- is, I mean, so the typical bid window would be thirty days, right? We're talking about Thanksgiving, Christmas, and.
We don't have to have it bid by Christmas, we just have to tell them.
Okay.
If you have the intent.
And then again. Consider it should be. You can extrapolate a lot. You all have been effectively invited fifteen people who do this for a living, and. One and a half have bothered to prepare a suggested bid.
But, I mean, that's also what I'm saying, though, like, I, I think ideally you get three bids for any project of this expense, and so we can at least get a third. I mean, the first and the two that we have are so far apart. I don't even feel like it's like fair to make a decision on that. Ideally, if we have time, I think we. And, and if not, then at least we can tell our citizens, we tried several times to get bids, and if we decide not to move forward, then it's not for lack of effort.
And as Mr. Turner said, you can tell your constituents, listen. The market evidently requires a indefensible amount of money. We'll wait, markets change, things change.
It ain't going down.
Probably not, but. That would be my, that would be my preference, is we try and bid it one more time.
So, I would agree with that.
Motion to, I wouldn't necessarily even bother with action on this, we'll just revisit with MoDOT tomorrow. Let them know that the Y has bid theirs, and would like to move forward, and start reevaluating a bid back and trying to get something out this morning next.
And if there's any way to do any kind of redesign, you know, like, partial, part of it to.
Pay forty-eight thousand dollars in engineering to redesign?
Nope.
After we get out of the concrete business, we're getting the engineering business.
The wall to. Some kind of shortcuts like that, that would still pay, still.
There's no shortcuts on the engineering component, cuz. To, to, to kind of hammer the issue home here, we've spent all of this time on the engineering component to get plans that met MoDOT spec. And were approved by MoDOT to bid, so do you want to open a can of worms of redesigning? Or attempting to redesign or evaluating redesign, cuz then you're, you're talking, okay, let's push it out away from the road so we get away from the need for retaining wall. That's additional easement acquisition from the school district to allow for that to happen, like you're at in eighteen months probably. If we try and go down that route, plus the costs associated with the engineering plans, engineering review through MoDOT, basically just repaying. The engineering contract that we've paid, which fifty-some-a-thousand dollars. I just don't think there's, while there may be cost savings, I don't think it offsets the added expense.
In talking to the school, they don't have any plans right now in the near future to build on that property, do they? I know at one time they were talking about an early childhood.
I think that is still a long-range plan, plus their transportation eventually will move down there, but, you know, I think. I was a Dr. Roth here just two months ago, so as you recall, their original plan was a performing arts expansion, but they've since pushed that back, and they're focusing on. Parking lots, reroutes, HVAC, so any of those other further ones have also been pushed out further, so I don't.
Ten years or further, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, definitely not within five years do they have, as of now, to my knowledge, intents of developing those properties, in which case they would just build a sidewalk. So. I will recircle with, with MoDOT and we'll give you guys some information as soon as we can on what makes sense there.
And on the privately owned block, if they should ever decide to build there, would they be required to do?
Correct.
Sidewalks on both sides?
Correct.
So how would that tie into the? MoDOT specs?
MoDOT specs are only applicable to the grants and the need for potential future tap grants. We could, to your point, we could certainly build a sidewalk out there for cheaper if we didn't care about potentially not getting another tap grant for the next. foreseeable future until their staff changeover at MoDOT, where they're not disappointed in our performance on this particular grant application. Very few federal builders that come trickling down that have to go out to. Way more sidewalk projects than there are.
Resolution number two zero two five dash five four, resolution authorizing the purchase of a fine screen escalator assembly rebuild parts for the wastewater treatment plant.
Thank you, Mayor, and the board. The headworks grid screen conveyor at the wastewater treatment plant needs to have its wear parts replaced. Uh, this assembly was originally installed in twenty eighteen, it hasn't had any major. Major maintenance done to it. It runs continuously, which is kind of impressive when you think about it. Uh, again, known by the trade name escalator, it has thirty-five separate wearing parts, you see in your packet, it's a bundle of parts here. Uh, this is what. The. This is what the sales folks say we're gonna need when we tear this thing apart, and we need to have all the parts when we get it back together to do this one time. Uh, the assembly itself showing significant signs of wear in many areas, it's not performing as it was intended. Basically, with grid solids in the headworks, which means the beginning of the plant, to keep it out of the secondary treatment basin. Basically keeping plastics in, you know, inert solids, sand, things like that, that aren't gonna be biologically broken down by the activated sludge process that's a little further out of the plant, so. Keeping things out of the plant, we don't want in the treatment train. Of course, you see in your packet, the, the little R register with trademarks on all these parts, these parts are proprietary. You could find some of these nuts and bolts, but by the end of the day, it would take us weeks to get the exact ones, so this whole package together. Of parts totals thirty thousand, one hundred forty-six dollars and twenty-two cents, including freight. Again, this is the first real rebuild since, uh, it was installed in twenty eighteen, and it is definitely necessary and it is due, and I do recommend approval. And then your packet, this three-D rendering, that's kind of deceiving, cuz this guy's about fifteen feet tall, and it goes from the surface down into a pit. This is. Not a small thing, for sure, is the cost.
So this device filters the stuff at the beginning of the first phase, it accomplishes that mechanically. How long will it be out of service for you to do it?
Uh, we hope to do it in two days, yeah. We beat that, we're doing good.
Yep.
In the meantime, since you asked, we'll be bypassing to the EQ basin, and any of those solids will just go in there and settle on the pond, the old EQ basin, those won't be going through.
I, I have cities without this, it's, it's a good way to do it. And as you said, if you consider these moving parts run every minute of every day for years, uh, they do wear out. It's the. Garbage disposal in your sink that never, ever stops.
Actually, it is.
So how many of these screens are in the wastewater treatment?
This is the, this is the one and only.
The one and only?
Yep, it's right at the headworks. In the incoming flow. It's, uh, there's a bar screen which catches, you know, garbage bags and crazy things, and this is gonna get all the finer screens, it's a real. It's kind of like, uh, you're looking under that desk there, that perforated piece of metal, it's much more fine than that, it's. Basically only sand is gonna pass through it, it's, uh, when they say fine screen, it's a pretty fine screen, and so what there are, just like you would imagine in an escalator. There's layers and layers and layers of these trays that are basically constantly circling out of the headworks, out of that water, and. They are actually worn in the corners, you can, so items are now passing through the corners of the, of the screen, and that's what we don't want, and it's gotten to that point. Kind of everything all at once, we're gonna end up with a new plant in more ways than one, because we've got a new addition coming, and the way things are going this last year. Everything's coming due from the old plant, too, so. Everything all at once.
Speaking of the new plant, will one of these be in the new plant, too?
Absolutely, yeah.
More than one, or just?
Just one.
Just one?
So this is at the headworks, so we've been out there on the site, and it's way up in the northwest corner, so we're just building a secondary identical next to it, so it'll be one of these right there.
And what kind of guarantee they give us on the parts?
Uh, parts, parts are probably guaranteed, that's a good question, um, parts themselves, I don't know, look into that, that's a heck of a question, but all these parts are stainless steel?
Three months?
Three months? Well, being that they lasted since twenty eighteen, I, I, I have a lot of faith in the parts themselves, it's. I guess the, the wild card is cost putting this thing together. Now, we've watched videos, we do all this stuff. Even BCRSD, other stuff, you know, subcontractors, no one's really done this a lot, because these are kind of rare, not rare, rare, but. These aren't, there's, if you come across a sewer operator, oh, yeah, I rebuilt ten of those, that doesn't exist, so. Not that it's that complicated, it's just that we are kind of under the gun a little bit, and wanna make sure we get it right the first time, once this thing comes apart, again. Getting back together real quick in two days, so. To your question, I guess, the, the parts themselves, again, this whole unit is almost entirely stainless steel, except for some of the brushes. That create a seal on the chain, and, um, there are some plastic, um, spacers, but. By and large, it's a big old bucket of stainless steel parts, stainless steel chains, stainless steel strainers and screens, and. I don't have any, I don't have any reservations about the warranty for the parts, anyway.
What's this budgeted for?
What's this budgeted for?
Yeah.
Was it budgeted?
Wasn't.
This specific, no, but he has a very large chunk of change for facility maintenance budgeted, this is within that budget.
It was not in CIP, it was not called up in CIP, but budget-wise, I know these are big dollars, but. Maintenance fund's doing pretty well in spite of this, in spite of these numbers.
Over the, over the last year or two, when we were placing all of these thirty to eighty thousand dollar pumps, we have since left a couple hundred thousand dollars a year in the plant maintenance fund for. These types of things, knowing they were coming due.
So they don't send somebody with knowledge of how to put these things back together?
No, sir, they wanna pay.
That sounds.
Ken, you're scaring, buddy.
I take a video, I mean, that's how we do things, take a video, take it apart, I don't know.
You'd be amazed what's on YouTube, seriously, even into like specialized equipment. There are manuals, there are O and Ms we can follow, but, you know, visual, everything, learning being visual, we like to see it. In videos and not just two-dimensional drawings and stuff, so when we get that, we watch it as well before we get into a project.
No, no pressure, the pot's just getting fuller every day.
We've done crazier things already, so. I don't think this will be a problem for us.
All right. Any other questions for Kevin? I get a motion to approve, resolution number two zero two five dash five four, a resolution authorizing the purchase of a fine screen escalator assembly rebuild parts for the wastewater treatment.
So moved. Second. All in favor?
Resolution number two zero two five dash five five, a resolution authorizing the purchase of a twenty twenty-six Ford F-150 Super Cab four-by-four for the sewer department.
Thank you again, Mayor. The good news is we have added a new position, a new FTE full-time employee position for the treatment plant, uh, its title is Utility, sort of Utility Supervisor. He's within the, sort of, he will run essentially the sewer department inside Public Works. Uh, essentially, he's gonna need something to drive, so this is a vehicle, uh, being purchased or proposed for that employee, it's a. F-150 Super Cab, means it's a small-door Super Cab, it's not this, the big crew cab, four big doors, it's a smaller version of that. Again, for the sewer supervisor, it needs to be four-by-four, if you've ever been into any of our access roads, it's an adventure getting to the lift stations themselves. For the, primarily, it'll be carrying, uh, you know, hand tools and light equipment, I don't envision this thing doing any, any amount of towing, that's why it's only a V-six. EcoBoost for mileage. Trans, and the, the cab, the extra cab would be for transporting other sewer department employees, uh, to job sites occasionally. This vehicle is state contract bid price. And the funding from this is from the Sewer Capital. Equipment, so total, uh, state bid price again is forty-four thousand, two hundred ninety-four dollars, and this is from Botkins Ford. The window sticker and the details are in the packet as well.
Yeah, we need a motion to amend the resolution when we get to action, just as an FYI, the price was typed in wrong on the resolution here. Any questions for Kevin on his, on the truck?
Truck's still hard to find.
They are, if, if you can wait, um, if you, if, uh, now, again, this is a new employee, we. To be honest, didn't think we were gonna get what we were looking for. Uh, but if we had three, four months, they, they can be had for sure, there's another batch of trucks moving in. After January, but obviously, we gotta, he's gotta hit the ground running. They're not as hard during COVID, if you, if you recall that, that was a disaster, I was involved in that, too. But another city, and they were just, you wait, you wait, you wait another year and wait another year, but. We got what was available on the lot, is, meant, meets pretty close with what, with what I was looking for, I'm not a compressed dump puller. I don't think it's too much truck, but, uh.
So a new, new unsold year-old is not. A possibility. Something that's been sitting out. You know what I mean?
I'm not sure.
Ex- ex- excess.
Like a twenty-five?
Twenty-five.
Oh, yeah, no.
Twenty-four.
So the, the state bid, um, and Ford's not the only one, Chevy does it too, there's a limited amount of vehicles that they, that they'll put on state bid, because why would you? They sell, um, state bid is, is bare bones, right? They're just making enough, they cover a little bit of their, you know, their time, they're making just enough money. So this truck could be put on a lot, you know, not state bid, it's seven thousand dollars more, right now, right now, and they'll sell it. So, I mean, they're kind of doing us a favor, so we can't complain too loudly, you know, either gonna wait for that truck. Or you're gonna get the truck on the lot, one or the other, but. It, it's not like we could order a certain truck, you know, with aluminum wheels and this and that, and get particular with, you know. In the details on the packaging and stuff, it's just kind of military, it's just, it is what it is, if you don't like it, you can walk, kind of the thing, it's. Maybe not that bad, the state bid is, is, is limited.
To your point, right, you call, you call two or three dealerships the ones that we normally do business with, and this is the only truck that is available tomorrow, hope to go pick up.
Yep. And they are old.
At that price point, I don't want to spend more.
There are some other trucks, big V-eights, not interested, and we don't need that, so.
All right, I get a motion, both can get a, I'm just, just motion to approve with the correct price, you don't need to, we don't need two motions.
What's your correct price?
Forty-four.
Forty-four, two ninety-four.
Forty-four, two ninety-four?
I get a motion to approve, resolution two zero two five dash five five, the resolution authorizing the purchase of a twenty twenty-six Ford F-150 Super Cab four-by-four. With a new price of forty-four thousand, two hundred ninety-four.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Resolution number two zero two five dash five six, a resolution authorizing the scope of work with Visu Sewer of Missouri LLC to conduct collective system sewer maintenance repairs. Maintenance repairs.
Thank you again, uh, Mayor. A section of the Grabby Sewer on Ash Street has been known for many years to be problematic. The spec, vetrified plate ITHR VCP is some of the oldest, it is, I don't know, some of the oldest in inventory. It has to be frequently cut with a root saw cutter attached to the hydraulic cleaner on a regular basis due to root intrusion, just like you're mowing the lawn. These, uh, VCP pipe sections are only five feet long, VCP meaning clay, red clay. The gaskets themselves are far gone long ago, so what happens is that the mature trees on, on this street, on Ash. So what happens is that the mature trees on, on this street, on Ash, have a really easy time, uh, getting into the joints of these VCP pipes. Um, so what happens is, uh, we have video of this, I may have had enough time, but, uh, the roots will come in, they'll start obstructing the flow, and you've got a sewer backup. So, uh, at least four times a year, we have to, uh, send a root cutter through, just again, like mowing the lawn, we have to mow the inside of that pipe because of all these joints. And again, the, the total length is four hundred seventy-two feet, uh, so every five foot, there's a joint. So, um, it's full of roots essentially. A, an attempt to, uh, facilitate an open cut repair was made in twenty twenty-four. However, we found out, uh, kind of like at midstream, that there was a high pressure gas main right next to it. Uh, and then we kind of, uh, we punted on that, it was just not worth the trouble. So we couldn't open cut it, um, so what is more feasible is this, is this proposal, and that's basically grout packing. They send a machine in, seals up both ends of the joint, and it pressure grouts, it forces grout in through that, that radial seal where the joint is, and three hundred sixty degrees, it pumps grout into that, keeps the roots out, it's, the grout is somewhat sedimentous, it's kind of like a mortar, it hardens. And so each joint section becomes more like a, more like a suitable pipe. So the total pipe section is probably, again, four hundred seventy-two, seven, four hundred seventy-two feet long. Uh, with the eight inch pipe sections being only five foot long, again, the joints, uh, to be sealed are estimated to be ninety. The cost of the project is estimated to be twenty-eight thousand zero, uh, thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents, again, that's an estimate. Mu, much of these, most of these prices are fixed, however, the quantities of grout is an unknown. That's why they, they put a best guess on the quantities of grout they're actually gonna pump into this pipe or outside of the pipe. This project is also state bid, it's, uh, P-back pricing. Uh, I think on the city of Fulton, jumped on the event, they got state bid pricing, we're kind of doing that. So in your, this is basically a section of Ash, again, between Main Street and Bass. It's this section here, we all know it, love it, the sewer department, um, is probably, that we know of, the most problematic section of pipe in town, and it's a good place to start.
Is it on the south side of Ash, north side?
North side.
Yeah.
So where we read that street ripped out last year, if you recall.
Yes, uh, here's Ash, here's Main, it's, it's between these mailers here, this, these, so they're passing through this mail, all the way up to this mail. Questions?
Questions for Kevin?
I hate to do this again, Kevin, but.
What do you know?
Well, you got an estimate price in there, I think you need to set a not to exceed amount or be in a position to tell them to stop at twenty-eight thousand.
I can certainly do that, um.
I would, I would say, I would say put it at a not to exceed of thirty thousand, just give them an even number and as you monitor it, and we get close to the original estimate of twenty-eight. I don't want to set it as a fixed price of twenty-eight thousand thirty-seven fifty and you run out of speed and have to come back.
See no further questions? I get a motion to approve Resolution number two zero two five dash five six. A resolution authorizing a scope of work with Visu Sewer in Missouri LLC to conduct collection system sewer main, main repair, not to exceed thirty thousand dollars.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Come on to reports, um, just to follow up on a few things. The McKee project, uh, Dan McKee.
Kevin's gonna touch on that during his report, if you'd like to.
Okay.
Tell that, otherwise he can do it.
And then, um, in chief, I had a customer complaint, or should say customer, I had a resident complain about our officers on the highway when the roundabout is backed up. So just let you know, the roundabout was backed up, we had them pulled over on the highway, and.
Had a car stopped in the highway?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Oh.
Okay.
So.
So a traffic stop was underway. Yeah.
Causing that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. All right.
Back at the coast.
At the time of the traffic. Next time, just let people run into the back end.
Yeah.
All right, move on to city ministry reports. I don't have a lot for you, because I was going to report on tap, but I felt it more appropriate to, to have that discussion during the meeting, so we could have some back and forth on it. As stated last minute, you have a lot of calendar events, please make sure you're checking your calendars, we'll try and keep you updated on those events. Uh, the R S B P for the Ready Annual. I know I sent out a, a reminder on that one, that one's due, so if you're, have availability to go, please consider going to that one, that'd be a good one. The rescheduled Boone County Government Dinner, what is the date?
Boone County.
It was on nineteenth, I think. Correct, so nineteenth for the Boone County Government Dinner. I have Dries and Rick, R S B P, for that. If there are anyone else that would like to go, please let us know. It's at Boone County Law Enforcement Center. It's a good opportunity to engage not only with our county elected officials, but other area county municipalities and their staff and elected officials.
Oh, wow. Was it by any chance originally on the seventeenth?
It was, yeah.
Okay, because I've got it on two days, so.
Yeah, it was moved to the, moved to the nineteenth, because it was conflicting with some council meetings on the seventeenth, so.
And then, uh, the Ready Dinner, what day was that on?
That's next Wednesday. It's next Wednesday. It's not a dinner, but their end of year, it's a, a four to six event next, the twelfth? Yeah, next Wednesday.
Moving on to city attorney's report?
No report.
Thanks, sir. Public Works Directors.
Mr. Mayor, more? Uh, quick word on stop signs. Majority of stop signs in town are twenty-four by twenty-four, these are the ones where you see in neighborhoods, any, any neighborhood where the speed is below thirty miles an hour. The new standard is thirty by thirty, the only reason I bring it up is because when they get put up, they look a little out of place, they look like they're oversized. Just want to let you know, that's normal now, thirty by thirty, it's, uh, seen them and they're, they just kind of look odd. So if you ever wondered, that's why, that's the new M U T C D standard for all streets, uh, thirty miles an hour and below. Uh, these signs can be replaced over time, you know, they're not saying you gotta, you gotta go wrong. You're gonna replace all your stop signs, they're gonna be replaced when they're bent, broken, warped, when the retro, but retro reflectivity is gone, or it's on a wood pole, et cetera, so, quick word on stop signs. We, uh, do have an interview for, uh, the Streets Department position that is scheduled for this week. The Streets Department's been, last two weeks have been going through trucks, plows, sanders, discs, augers, all that fun stuff. Getting ready for snow and ice operations. Uh, I think at the end of the month, we're having the big snow huddle where we all go through zones, assignments, and kind of get our heads in the snow and ice operations again. Uh, moving on to storm water, the Oak Street Stormwater Project, I have it down here, they need a day, that's actually completed now. Does look pretty good. The Oak Street is done, Caspian still pending. I don't have anything under parks for an update. Uh, under sanitary sewer and water treatment plant, here again, uh, gonna blow it a little bit because we have a Class A full-time sewer operator. These guys, I can't stress enough, are really hard to find. And actually, when I, we started this, this wasn't that long ago, kind of got laughed at, like, you're not gonna find that. But we did, um, and city's, uh, really better off for it, and, uh, can't say enough about it. So we're really pleased to have him, his name is Ike, he's gonna start on the seventeenth, on November. He comes from the City of Columbia Water Treatment Plant, Wastewater Treatment Plant. And, uh, we'll see him soon, in just under two weeks. A mechanical component, component of the headworks, they differ. Part of the headworks, uh, I have an update on this, we read it, we actually, uh, found the parts. We found what was wrong with this last item here. This is a compactor, sort of in line with the escalator. What it, what it does, it, uh, compacts that trash and moves it to a dumpster. That was not a big repair, those, those repair, those parts are ordered, so. Few updates here, since, uh, we, we give up this cycle, we can go, so. Any questions for me?
How many, oh, how many vacancies do you have on the street right now?
Uh, we just have one vacancy left, um, for this, uh, opening that we have an interview, interview for on Thursday.
Other than that, let's do a recap of your meeting with city engineer up on Sunshine.
Yeah, Sunshine, um, I did meet with Christina, uh, we went through, um, that whole situation. Uh, again, I can't stress enough, we, we don't have any public right of ways, I think we all understand that, we don't, there's no city property, there's no, there's not a lot we can control, what we can control is the end of Sunshine, um. Went through Google Maps, and basically, if you look at Sunshine in twenty thirteen, it's wide open. You can kind of see the field back there, if you look at it today, it's a jungle, so. Uh, Christina and I totally agree, recommends we clean out the, uh, the end of Sunshine so that water can move faster again, onto school property. I talked to the school representative, J R, he ran up the chain, you guys, he says, we can cut down whatever we want at the end of Sunshine. There are some improvements we can do there, and that will help the street, the street does back up, there is some localized flooding on the end of Sunshine. Uh, beyond that, um, Christina's gonna come back and check, uh, the storm pond. I did take some photos of the, the, um, storm detention pond that is upstream, near the, the vet hospital up there. It didn't look like it was infilled very much, we didn't lose a lot of capacity in my eyes. So, um, to say that, the, I guess, the storage lockers or the storage facility up there, and its hardscape had a lot to do with the flood event that Danny saw, I, I guess I don't agree with that necessarily. There are some things we can do, um. I want, Kyle, do you want to talk about the, the home itself, or should we podcast that part?
Um, I don't think you need to.
Yeah, so there are some recommendations I do have for the, for the resident and how he can help water pass through his, his property a little bit better. There are actually some things that, uh, that resident can do, and I will touch base with him on those. So basically, upstream of that, we're gonna look, uh, Christina's gonna take a harder look at how that is coming through, but again, for the public works side of it, we're gonna come in with chainsaw has blazing, we're gonna cut in the ends of Sunshine. Again, I do have permission from the school district to do that, again, this is not city property. Uh, but beyond that, that's, that's the only update I have for, for Sunshine for now.
Moving, circle back, talk to the property owner. He, we talked today again, and, uh, he gave us permission to do what we need to do, so.
Well, there's nothing we need to do necessarily on his property, there are some man-made instructions that could be removed, and that's the recommendation that Kevin's going to make.
Yeah, okay, so we'll just visit with them individually then.
Yep.
Okay, that's cool.
Thanks, man.
Thank you.
Moving on to water supervisor monthly reports.
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, um, business as usual, as I always said, um, the water department's still working with McClure. Um, they've, they've asked for some shake files from the, whenever we conducted the lead service line inventory. We have sent them in that direction where they can get that. What they're wanting is to take those shake files, put them in with our, our G I S that they're working on for our master plan for the water side. Um, and once that's complete, um, then they will have all of that information in there also from the lead service line. The water department also, um, which, I put it on here, wrote this about a week ago, is now complete with, uh, the second bullet issued, as you won't say. Um, going back through the northern half, from basically Broadway to the north. All the valve exercising has been done for the year, um, but they're going back through and any of them that have any just, you know, normal silt or, or mud or rocks or anything in the, in the valve boxes, they're cleaning those out with the vac trailer, sucking all those out, so that they're clean, free of any debris, so that we can get on them at any given time. Water department staff will also be planting nine trees, I think it's ten, actually, nine or ten trees up at the North Tower. Um, just kind of for a screening, so that as you're going up and down, uh, Highway sixty-three, it's not just in plain sight, um, basically just kind of a buffer zone, so. That's all I got.
Thank you, sir.
Moving on to Board of Albers. Alvin Coburn?
No report.
Alvin Rayncraft?
No report.
Alvin Lewis?
No report.
And Alman Turner?
We want to close today.
For close, yeah.
Yeah.
Right. All right, a short one.
Any comment from the general public?
For you, Alman?
Nope. I can get a motion to vote, to go into closed session, pursuant to chapter six one zero dash zero two one, legal actions of, uh, litigation and hiring. I get a motion, so moved. Can I have a second?
Second.
Alvin Turner?
Aye.
Alvin Rayncraft?
Aye.
Alvin Lewis?
Aye.
Alvin Coburn?
Aye.
Alvin Coburn. All right.